All right, thank you. Well, I'm looking at my screen and it looks like we are all here, present and accounted for. And we were just saying that this is one of those nights that we're kind of thankful for Zoom, that we get to stay in our nice warm houses instead of having to drive down to City Hall. So we're going to enjoy it. All right, so I think we can just go ahead, because this is a study session, and just get into our topics. And Andrea is here. I'm seeing her box, I don't see her face. But Andrea, are you here? And you're muted.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. So then on our study session topics, I do have one question. I'm seeing two topics, A and B. The first one, the identification of contributing and non-contributing structures and proposed district boundary first project update. And then the second topic with attachments is discussion on updating regulations for a certificate of historic appropriateness, COAs. And I'm wondering if I, you know, just missed this in the packet or if it's not in here? And if it's not, if it's possible to add? It is the designation criteria that we started to discuss in December at our study session. And I know Rick kind of wrote up some of the discussion points that we were looking to both the SHPO's model and also some of what we were seeing in Fort Collins' regulations. And would that be possible to discuss at this meeting? Is that okay?
Well, let's see. We didn't actually prepare for that for tonight, but you have me concerned that perhaps the staff report for the certificate of appropriateness didn't make it into the packet. And so I am going to the packet at this moment.
I saw the
Yeah, it's here.
attachments.
Yes, page four and five, I think.
Yeah. They're all there.
Yeah. Okay, okay. All right, so the idea, at least for the agenda that staff was anticipating tonight, was that this will be a continuation, as you said Chair, of the historic preservation code update and getting input from HPP members. And tonight's topic was certificate of historic appropriateness criteria. And I think as you guys remember, this input that you're giving goes to KKC for inputting into the code. And if we would like to go over what Rick presented, I would suggest that we put that on the agenda for next month. Does that sound possible?
Yeah, it certainly sounds possible. Does that give us enough time to incorporate it into the work that we're doing? If so, you know, I'm fine with that. Rick, how about you? What do you think of that?
Well, I don't know. I mean, we are moving to determine significance of downtown and what the updated criteria based on the state model code does, it helps clarify it a little bit, even though it won't be officially adopted until June, but it might give the board direction on how to approach the downtown district in terms of significance and integrity. And the only thing that I would say is, I wrote it up as a point of discussion and incorporated it into the state code. I incorporated what I heard was that we liked the Fort Collins definitions and how they laid out the criteria. And then I added a section on conservation overlay districts, which we've now been discussing in the last two Envision webinars that we've had about the ULUC. So those are just things that are coming up and moving forward. And maybe the thing to do is to show it. We don't have to discuss it. Everybody can just look at it and just see what we've done. And you can just see how I structured it. It's all color-coded, so it's pretty easy to see where things were inputted. But if everybody likes it, or we can make changes, I mean, something we can hand to Kendon Keiths, and it's section three, and it's done.
Well, I think that contributing, non-contributing is a concept that does relate a lot to certificate of historic appropriateness. And because we have advertised the meeting for that topic, that it would be acceptable. And Mike, Kathleen, and Jen, if you feel otherwise, I think that we're probably okay discussing that under this agenda item.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that, knowing that we're not, you know, the study session is not to make any decisions of any sort, but to provide guidance to staff.
It's a continuation of the December meeting, really.
Okay.
Now, Andrea, you have the information that Rick prepared. He sent that to you. So if we decide that we want to just show it and, you know, maybe discuss it as we see fit, that's something you can share your screen to do. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And for that matter, Rick could share his screen as well.
You'd have to give him permission to share his screen, just the logistics of that, but.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you know, I think that can work out. If you would like to be the one to kind of guide us around and have control of the document and the scrolling and whatnot.
I can scroll it and then tell you what I did, and he can just read it, and so you can see. I could do that whenever you want to do that.
Okay.
All right, so that's good. Thank you very much. And then, so Andrea, why don't you just jump into what you had prepared? And we'll go from there.
Okay, so then, just to clarify, we're starting with the first agenda item on contributing, non-contributing as it relates to Work Group Two. And not this certificate of appropriateness criteria.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, do you see the presentation here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so tonight, what we have is the first update from our Work Group Two. And I'm going to be giving, since it's been a couple of months since we've talked about the work groups and the updates, so I'm going to give a brief overview of what it's all about and where we're at, and then focus in a little bit more on Work Group Two. And then we'll follow it up with Laura Gabriel and David Spratlin giving brief overviews of what they've been up to with this. So. Let's see. Sorry, this is a little bit different operating this for some reason tonight. And I just threw in a couple of historic photographs just for fun, so they're not necessarily related, just threw them in there for interest. Okay, so as you recall, council was the one that requested that staff, or gave direction to staff, to prepare the downtown historic district application. And their direction was to include Main Street, Alamo, and then the side streets in between. And as part of staff's work to assemble that, the council wanted the HPP to help participate in putting that application together. And so we had Work Group One to update the downtown historic building survey. That's now complete, and that was Rick Cronenberger and Chris Geddes. And now we're on Work Group Two, where we're going to be identifying contributing buildings and looking at a proposed boundary for the downtown historic district. And then once we finish that, we finish up with historic themes. So we're going to start first with the historic district boundary. And as you know, even though we are in the process of writing, rewriting the historic preservation code, this application comes under the existing code. And so we are using definitions and process that is in place today. And so what I pulled here is just the definition of what, or the criterion for a historic district boundary. And that is a district that is related by pattern of either physical elements or social activities. And significance is determined by applying criteria to the patterns and unifying elements. And so when we, Work Group Two starts looking at all of the properties that have been surveyed and the boundaries that we're looking at, making sure that what we have meets this criterion for the historic district application. Another thing that's required by the current code is to identify what is the period of significance for the historic districts. And you know that this varies from district to district. It's not necessarily a citywide thing or just a downtown thing. So for example, Rappahoe Hills, the period of significance would be early 1960s. For downtown, it's a very wide period of significance. And that's because downtown started to be developed at the very beginning of Littleton's history, and properties kept being constructed all the way up into the 1960s. We do have later properties, but they have not reached a period of historic significance, 40 years per our code. And so here's a picture, by the way, of the Leech House over on Alamo, one of the older properties within the projected downtown historic district. So the period of significance definition is the span of time in which a group of properties within a proposed or existing historic district attain the significance for which they meet the historic district criteria. Now, we already have period of significance that's been identified in the downtown historic preservation standards guidelines that this Work Group Two is going to be working off of and probably following pretty closely with that to see if we can't use that for this district. Then finally, we get to contributing properties. And in terms of identifying which properties within that boundary are contributing to the district, again, we need to follow the definition in the code. And I've written it all up here. It's a little bit long, but essentially, we are looking at buildings and other items that were present during the period of significance, and they need to have integrity. And they need to meet integrity and historic significance. And the other thing that can also happen is that they could individually meet the criteria for landmark designation, all on their own.
Can I ask a question really quick, Andrea?
Yeah.
Okay, my question is, I think that we need to know what the definition or the meaning of sufficient integrity is, because that could differ between people and different groups. I think we need a definition of what it means sufficient integrity means to this group. Because my definition could be different than yours or Rick's, or... So I need a definition for that.
You know, and we can draw on the field of historic preservation. There are, there's good information out there on what integrity is. And I think from that, we can develop a concept within our Work Group Two of what would be sufficient integrity. I see that as the work of our Work Group doing. And then that would be presented to HPP at the March meeting. And at that time, I think that could be a good potential discussion point, if board members had further questions or had different ideas about what that might be. If that sounds all right to you, Laura.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then just finally, contributing properties don't have to be pristine. They can have some degree of alteration. But you need to determine that there's sufficient building fabric remaining to be considered contributing. Okay, and so that's what we are working with. And I know that Laura and David have begun their work on identifying contributing, non-contributing. And if each of you just want to take a quick, very quick minute to talk about where you are with that, Laura, if you'd like to go first.
Okay. I spent last week going through, either looking at the properties myself or pulling them up on Google Earth, going through each property and looking through the surveys that Chris and Rick did. So I have a list, and I know David's done the same thing. On the Alamo Street surveys, I found that we had 13 that I thought were contributing and three that were non-contributing. On the side streets, which would be Rapp, Curtis, Nevada, and Prince and Sycamore, we had what I thought would be contributing, 17, and three non-contributing. And on Main Street, I found that I thought 31 were contributing and 13 were non-contributing. We've not gotten together to confer, and we may have some differences, but that's what I have so far. I did have a question on the period of significance. And I guess we're working from 1870 to 1980, is that correct?
That's our starting point, as has been established with the downtown design standards.
Okay, there's only a few properties, maybe like two, maybe three, that don't fit because of the age. But that is the time period we're working from. So, and I just have to say, these survey results were just really incredible. So thank you, Rick and Chris, for doing it. So that's all I have at the moment. David?
Yeah, I've done a very similar process as Laura, you know, going through the survey results, which are outstanding, and fill in a ton of gaps from what we've had in previous survey forms, as well as just updating some of the additional information in there. So it's a great job there. Also looked through a lot of Google Earth images due to weather and just other work-related events, not being able to physically get out there yet. But that's on my pending schedule to do another walking tour, just to re-familiarize myself with those properties again. I don't have exact numbers like Laura does as far as the, what I felt initially were contributing or not contributing, going through those survey results. But I will tally that up based on the comments I have added onto the form. And I think the next steps we have is for Laura and I and Andrea to get together and share our experiences and kind of have those discussions as far as what we feel fits in those boxes.
Okay, great.
That sounds really exciting. You guys have done a lot of work despite some handicaps in terms of weather. Is there anything more to add to this, Andrea? Or does anyone have questions? So it doesn't sound like there are questions or comments on A, the first project update. I just want to say, I'm pretty impressed with the work that you guys have done so far. So that's great, thank you. Shall we move on to B, which is a discussion of updating regulations for COAs?
Yes. Oh, did Chris Geddes have her hand up momentarily there?
I do not see any video for Chris, so.
Yeah, I don't have my video on.
Okay.
No, I was just going to say, Laura, was it you who had a question about integrity? Like having a standard of integrity?
Well, the definition says sufficient integrity. And that, to me, is a really kind of loose term. Like I said, sufficient integrity, to me, could be vastly different than you or somebody else. So that's why I think we need to kind of pin that down as to what that really means.
I guess my comment would be, it might be better to not have it very specific, because it could be different for different buildings. And especially when we're dealing with a commercial downtown where we have a lot of buildings that have undergone change. You know, like we've talked about, you know, commercial buildings have the most change probably out of any building, because every time a new tenant comes in, they change something on the building to fit their needs. And we don't want to necessarily exclude a building because it kind of, you know, doesn't meet this sufficient integrity that we have for another building. And so like the Leech House is quite different than Viables. And so to have the same integrity interpretation for both of those buildings, I think could be problematic.
That's where I think we need a definition, because they're so different, and their integrity is different.
It looks like Rick has his hand up.
So remember when Chris talked about the integrity and significance in the last meeting? It was a column with a beam across the top. They're both together. So you have to understand what the significance, the period of significance is in order to determine the integrity. So just because a building's old, it may not have integrity for a particular period of significance. Say perhaps the building is from 1910. It fits, the building could fit into the current period of significance for downtown, but if it was significantly remodeled in 1950 with mid-century modern facade, it may no longer have integrity for the previous period of significance, but it will for the new one. And so every building has to be looked at in that context. That's why understanding the significance is really critical to determine our boundaries.
Well, and each building is different. It has a different history, and it has a different evolution. And just because one building has been significantly altered doesn't automatically put it out of the running, because like Rick said, it depends on when that change occurred. And so, you know, we kind of have to look at things on a case-by-case, building by building, you know, look at it each by itself. And obviously, you know, it's kind of hard to say that when you're looking at a whole district, because they all kind of interconnect and relate to each other. But it's hard to say across the board, this is the level of integrity, and, you know, this is what it means to require sufficient integrity. And so every building has to meet this, because some buildings are going to have, I hate to say more integrity, because that implies something that's not quite what I'm getting at. But, but again, like the Green Bride, you know, where we do have that mid-century modern first story, and that has become significant in its own right. And if we end up wiping that out, or, you know, letting somebody change that, you know, we're at the point now where that's kind of the last mid-century modern storefront. You know, all the other ones have been restored to what they look like originally or as close to original as possible. And so we've lost that, to show that evolution of how buildings have changed over the decades in the downtown. And so I think there's kind of a, I hate to say a minimum, you know, you certainly want historic fabric intact and for the building to be able to convey what it's significant for. But I don't think across the board, we can have just like, okay, you minimally have to have these, you know, three things to be considered contributing to the district.
So one example, with the original national register boundaries, which are different than the Main Street landmark boundaries, and it's much smaller. I thought it was going to be much bigger, but there wasn't any integrity outside those three blocks. But look at the Van Shaack Building, or where Jackass Hill Brewery is. The period of significance for the Main Street Historic District per National Register only goes up to just before 1950. Van Shaack was built in 1956, it's mid-century modern. We've decided that we're going to expand the period of significance past that, which then brings a whole nether period of significance of buildings in, which is a mid-century modern, of which we have five downtown. The other thing is, if you look at the post office, the post office would be eligible for both periods of significance. The original construction, which is basically there, and the addition that was put on in 1960, which has mid-century modern elements on the interior, though not on the exterior. Then it gets harder. And it's not easy. It requires a lot of discussion. So, and that's why we're doing this. So, and that's why we're doing this as well, but it isn't easy, so.
Well, I think bringing that period of significance, you know, past, what was it before, was it when the local district was done before, when did, when was the period of significance? When did it stop? Fifty-five? Nineteen forty-five? When Woodlawn opened?
I thought it was nineteen fifty.
Andrea would know. I, I know, I think it's later because there's later buildings in there that were opted into the district. I don't know if they really had a period of significance very well defined when they created this thing.
I don't think they did either.
Andrew was here, I wasn't there at the time.
Are you talking about the, the local district?
Local district, yeah.
Yeah, surprisingly, we didn't establish one.
Oh, I didn't know you could do that.
Well.
Well.
There were strange times, that's all I'll say.
I mean, National Register, they typically cut it off at, at whatever is like kind of the fifty-year mark. Because for them, things should be fifty years of age or older. So bringing that up to nineteen eighty certainly includes a lot more. It makes a wider period of significance where more buildings, you know, fall into that.
It gives us a hundred and ten years, basically.
Eighteen seventy and then eighteen eighty, yeah. It, it is a long period of significance. But again, you know, like, that's what a local program is for, is to encompass more of that, where the National Register kind of has this arbitrary fifty-year rule. You know, you get, you can pick up those buildings that we know are important and contribute to the downtown district and what it's significant for. Whereas National Register, you know, would require all this exceptional justification for it.
Yeah, I, I, I think a couple of things. Number one, I'm kind of surprised to learn that we did not have an official period of significance, since we have been speaking about our, our period of significance with relative authority for all of the years that I've been on HPP. So that'll be nice to actually establish one. And then also, you know, it, it sounds like, as uncomfortable as it may be, you know, so, some of this is very subjective. And I think that subjective really needs to be well thought out and easily defended. So it, it can't be just seen as, as being arbitrary and, and, you know, just what the tastes are of the people who are, are doing this today. So yeah, it's, as, as Rick said, boy, it's, it's not easy. This kind of puts a, a, a layer of complexity into it. But if it's well thought out and, and, and based in, in, in solid information and solid theory of, of preservation theory, I think that's good. So yeah, y'all have your work cut out for you.
When the Main Street National Register District was created, the period of significance, they wanted to end in nineteen forty-seven, which was fifty years from nineteen ninety-seven, okay? I was able to push Tom and Lori to expand that, I think to fifty-five. I can't remember right now. Part of the problem.
I can look that up. I have the nomination right here.
Yeah. Part of the problem with the National Register is these reports are completed, the dates stay static, time moves on. And you have to reevaluate constantly those period of significance from the National Register. But you really, you really need to do it. It needs to be defined, and it's not as subjective as you really think it is. If you have a strong period of significance, a strong description of what that significance period is and what contributes, it's not as subjective as you might think.
They did nineteen fifty-five.
Right, okay.
The completion of the Modern Woodlawn Shopping Center was a defining moment, which began the continued suburbanization of the area decentralized commercial functions and Littleton and Main Street businesses. Yeah, so it, everything kind of shifted from Main Street.
And that was not an easy sell.
Code, it does say our Main Street Historic District in our code and definitions is a period beginning eighteen seventy and extending through nineteen seventy.
Okay, so they did a hundred years, wow.
Still would have picked up a fair amount of the mid-century that way.
Yeah. Well, the reason they did that too was we changed the period, the, the year to forty years instead of fifty years. And as Chris said, the fifty years is arbitrary. I know the history behind it, we won't go into it now, but I know the people who made those decisions, I've talked to them personally. They were quite old at the time, nineteen eighties, but I know how it came about. And there was no logic, it was political.
But, but I think you're right, Kim. I mean, we need, do need to be able to defend it. But I also, you know, it's, it is hard to just kind of, it, it's not black and white. And so to just say it's gonna be this, and it is really challenging when we look at such a variety of buildings in the downtown area, you know, from Alamo and, and Main Street, and then, you know, the connectors. And so there, there is such a wide range of, of buildings, building types and, and styles. And, and so I think to just kind of, to have, to think that it's gonna be that simple to say, okay, this is the, kind of the, you know, what sufficient means. It is gonna be different for different buildings.
You know, it's not that I wanted it to be a black and white definition, it's just I wanted to narrow what sufficient meant. Maybe a few more descriptive words or categories or just sufficient was just not sufficient enough.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I'm just, I, like, I'm, I'm trying to, to think about how you could narrow that down. You know, because again, you know, like somebody stuccoing the Leech House compared with Playables, I mean, Playable has been stuccoed for decades. It might, it's probably been stuccoed longer than it was brick. Versus the Leech House, if someone were to stucco that, you know, we would all be aghast at it. So again, you know, what's acceptable for one building might not be acceptable for another one. I don't know, I, I might need to sleep on that one. The other question I have is, once Work Group Two has kind of reviewed all of the properties and kind of have their suggestions or, you know, recommendations, because obviously we don't make any decisions. That's City Council's role. Is this something like we're all gonna agree on? I, I'm just wondering, like, I think Laura, you said there were thirteen buildings you felt were non-contributing on Main Street?
Yes.
Like thirty-one were, were yes and thirteen were no. I guess like that, I would want to see like, which are the thirteen that aren't? And, and like, are we all in agreement that those thirteen definitely do not? Or is that something that Work Group Two makes that decision or that recommendation? And then the rest of us just kind of go along?
Andrea and Mike.
Yeah, the idea is that each of the work groups does the work, but the, the recommendations to staff, which move on to KKC, come from the, the full HPP Board. So next month, we will have a presentation by Laura and David and me. And then there will be discussion by the Board and direction to staff at that point.
Would there be, like, in the material that comes out ahead of the presentation by them, would there be like a list? So that if we wanted to look at, you know, the survey from before or the, you know, the resurvey information and kind of, just kind of compare it and say, okay, this is the, because if somebody says, oh, you know, Jake's, I'm gonna be like Jake's, Jake's, Jake's. But if I, I need to see it to make that connection.
Yes, yes, I think like, like other projects that we bring forward, the Board needs to see it in advance, and that will be the case with us.
Okay, because it would be just nice to have a list of, these are the ones we think are contributing, these are the ones we think are non-contributing.
Yes, it would be tough to, it would be tough to respond, I think, on the spot.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And Mike, did you have anything to add to that?
Just a quick point of order, and I apologize for the interruption in the flow here. Commissioner Geddes, are you able to turn on your video? Oh, thank you. Typically, we, you know, for the, for the study sessions and the public hearings, we'd like to have everybody, every commissioner's video running unless there's a bandwidth issue. So, just a, a point of order, I apologize about the interruption, thank you.
No, I, I typically turn off my video when people are presenting because it helps with the bandwidth and, and I'm not feeling well tonight because I had a shingle shot two days ago. And so I'm really not feeling like I'm
Yeah.
happy and together.
Ready for prime time.
That's why it's up.
I do just want to quickly say, there are definitions for integrity. I believe the Secretary of Interior Standards, the Treatments, define it. Because you have to define integrity to determine whether your property can qualify for tax credits. The Park Service has gone through all this. And I can look later at the treatment standards and see if there's a definition in there, but I'm pretty sure there is a definition.
Well, there are definitions for integrity, it's the sufficient that I have a problem with.
Yeah, that's reading the building. And, and it's hard when you don't do it all the time. So, basically, when you guys present your findings and we have the hearing then, next Wednesday, then we'll all be involved with defining the integrity in, at that time. And we'll learn a lot at the same time as well, as we discuss each individual building, whether they have integrity or not.
Hearing next Wednesday, did I hear you correctly?
Uh, next meeting, I didn't say Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
Maybe I said Wednesday, I didn't want to do it next Wednesday, next meeting.
All right, thank you.
All right.
All right, Andrea, are you, are, are we prepared to move on to item B?
I'm ready.
All right, thanks Andrea.
Okay, so with this item, this is where we're going to be taking a look at updates to the Historic Preservation Code, which will be a chapter in the ULUC. And particularly, certificates of historic appropriateness and the criteria for how they can be approved. And also, what kinds of projects go to the Board versus what kinds of projects go to staff? So let's get started on this. I'd like to point out that, as you know, HPP established some comparison codes. And they are the Chapeau's Model Ordinance, Boise, Idaho, Fort Collins, Longmont, Aspen, Greeley, and Boulder. And so these were the codes that were referenced in the research that I did to get a feel what other communities are doing and look for special gems that may exist in some of these other codes. So in terms of the criteria for a certificate of historic appropriateness, the model code says, let's adopt, have everyone adopt the Secretary of Interior Standards. And then they also, the model code also has provisions to require with adopted design standards and guidelines. And as HPP knows, we already have several sets of design standards and guidelines in place. And I'm thinking that, and we'll see if you agree, that we would want to keep those in place because they really get at some specifics of the character of those particular areas. And then we're also gonna look at some additional criteria beyond that. All right, so in terms of Secretary Interior Standards, also by the way, known as the SOIs, the model code in Fort Collins uses the SOIs. Those are actually the only two out of our group of comparison codes. And Steph is recommending that we do adopt it because the SOIs have been tested across the country. And they've been modified, well, Rick can probably tell us at least once. And, and have really stood the test of time as being the right amount of guidance and flexibility to help drive a good historic preservation project. And they provide information on all different types of treatments. Whether you are looking at changing a roof, adding an addition, restoring a porch, adding, for example, a new set of stairs, adding a new window. And it gives ideas about what would be appropriate and not appropriate for each of those types of, of projects. So again, Steph is recommending that we do adopt Secretary of Interior Standards. The second item, design standards and guidelines. So we have the design standards for downtown, Historic Preservation Design Guidelines. There are also design guidelines for the Latham Heights Historic District. And we have voluntary design guidelines for the National Register District for Arapahoe Hills. And Steph is recommending, as I said before, that we keep those in place. So that we have that extra level of review criteria for particular areas of the city. Now, in terms of additional criteria, the, the model code suggests that we also include a criterion that has to do with compatibility with the property's current design, materials, features, size, scale, proportion, and massing. And if it's in a historic district, the same thing, compatibility with these different materials, features, and sizes proportions. And I think that's something that Steph is recommending approval on as well. It's something I think that is maybe not quite as identified as in the Secretary of Interior Standards and can be highlighted here with this extra criterion. And then for infill construction, another sort of added, added criterion, that we want to make sure that when there's infill construction, that new work shall be differentiated from the actual historic buildings. And so we're not, in other words, trying to create a false sense of what was there historically. We're not trying to build a sort of a, kind of a Disneyland type of a environment. We want to have buildings be more of their time, but at the same time be compatible with district. And so that would be another criterion that could be added and that Steph is recommending approval on. And then, let's see, just this final criterion. This is something that the city of Boulder had that I felt was a real gem. And they give consideration during certificate of appropriateness reviews for economic feasibility, incorporation of energy efficient design, and then access for disabled. And I think that that gives the Board a little bit of flexibility to work with applicants on particular issues that do come up. So I thought that maybe we would discuss this item first, the criteria. And then after we finish with that, then we can go to the next topic. If anyone has any questions or wants to just begin with a discussion.
Is that acceptable to everyone? Shall we just begin that discussion now?
On the Secretary of Interior Standards?
The SOIs and then the additional criteria that was put forth as well.
Okay.
All right.
The, the Secretary of Interior Standards for Treatment, which is the broader standards. which is the broader standards of which rehabilitation is a portion of the four standards, discusses infill in historic districts. They knew they had to do that. And they talk about how to evaluate a building to go in. Now, that's not an easy thing to do, believe me. But we might look at what the Secretary of Interior Standards says before we develop our own specific infill requirements to make sure that they don't conflict with each other. It's something that we are going to be dealing with on this board. And, and a lot of it has to do more with massing, scaling. It's a lot of things like that than it is with actual design of the building. The one point I want to make, we talk about preservation for years, we've talked about, you know, you want to differentiate the building. It's physically impossible to build a new building today that looks like an 1880 building. It's just not going to work because you don't have the craftsmen. So no matter what you do, it will always be differentiated to those who know pretty well. So I'm kind of nervous about really using that word because I know what architects will do and they'll take it to the extreme to the other side. So we just have to be careful how we use that word infill. And then look at the definitions in the standards.
So this is something that potentially we can take up with KKC in further discussions. And bring, once, once the draft is out for everyone to take a look at and comment on, we could take it from there if that is acceptable to the board, unless you'd like to iron it out further at this, at this meeting.
Yes, I'll just throw it real quick. The other language I think I've seen before is the, that it won't mimic historic. Try to mimic, I can't remember the exact language, and maybe that's another way to say it rather than differentiate. But, but I'm, yeah, I'm fine with letting them give some places or take a crack at that.
You know, we have such diverse architecture, particularly in Main Street. How do you determine what to mimic? I would like to make a point though. Andrea, you had cited the rehab standards from 2000, what year, 2007 or something like that? All the standards were updated in 2017, so we should use the most recent standard, which is 2017.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. I was just going to say, I think Andy, maybe what you were getting at is, it, it's to not create a false sense of history. That a building that goes in, that it doesn't look like it's always been there, that it complements the district, it fits, but it, you can tell it's not of that time period.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Yes, Andy?
I just wanted to say, when I looked at the staff report, I was really happy to see the language that you added Andrea on the feasibility, energy efficiency, and accessibility. So I'd like that we're incorporating other high, high priorities, things that we should be thinking about. I have questions about what that means, especially economic feasibility, but I, I like that we're thinking about it and pushing ourselves.
Yes, and I, I'd be happy to follow up with the City of Boulder and talk to them about how that actually plays out in their applications when app, when applicants are saying, well, you know, such and such is too expensable or unreasonable financially for us to, to do and how that, how that plays out. What kinds of, what, what kinds of questions and requests do they get?
That word makes me very nervous, economic feasibility. It's your own opinion of what's feasible or not, depending upon how much you want to spend, where you're at. And so I don't know how Boulder deals with that one. It could have more to do with certain code requirements, a small, small lots that you can't meet because all the codes are basically designed for new buildings with unlimited space. So that could be an issue that Boulder's talking about, but I don't, I don't know.
Well, I think that, that in reality, in, in just standard practice, Andrea, when an applicant is before you, there are issues of, of economic feasibility. And in working with an applicant, you know, you are balancing those things right now. So I think that that is, you know, the, the, the practice. And I, I guess, you know, to, to actually put that in, in your code is really just saying what you're, what you should already be doing.
Say, Andrea, could you stop sharing your screen?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
You know, what, I don't know, I don't know what it means. It, it might mean that the city council determined to require that so that preservation boards don't go to an extreme on requiring particular materials and methods that don't add value to the building, but add a lot of cost to the building. Because there's a lot of ways to build a building. And if you're doing an infill, you're looking at a skin issue that determines whether it's compatible, not the structural system or anything else. So it, it may have something to do with that. And just knowing the kind of architecture that's in build, in Boulder, and how long they've been doing historic preservation. They've probably got a rationale for it, which would be good to figure out. We don't quite have the same architecture in Littleton, unfortunately. We have nice buildings, but not like Boulder.
Yeah, and, and Andrea, you're going to follow up with them and, and find out exactly what that means and, and, you know, how does it work for them?
I will do that.
Okay, great.
And I can, I can report back next month.
Yeah, it's one thing to see something in someone's code and think, oh, this, this sounds like a really great idea. And then when you talk to them, they might say, oh, that's the biggest mistake we ever made. Don't do it. But it's al- always good to kind of follow up and understand how it's working for them.
One of the other sections I just wanted to bring up and throw out there as well, maybe to ask Boulder as well, how they've encountered this or if it's come up at all. When you're looking at the, for non-contributing properties within the district, the first bullet point under there about being compatibility within the property's current design materials, features, size, scale, and proportion. I'm, I'm wondering how that works if this building is non-compatible or, or non-contributing. If it doesn't comply with, say, the overall historic district's design. I think there's a hierarchy there where that overall historic district design kind of needs to trump that property, the non-contributing property's design.
Well.
Thank you, David. I wanted to ask that question and I couldn't figure out how to do it, so thank you.
Well, I think the idea with properties that are non-contributing is that there's more flexibility with them than contributing properties. And non-contributing properties often don't have any or very little historic fabric on them. And so there's, there's more flexibility in the type of design. At the same time, there's also a criteria that needs to be met that the, you know, it needs to be compatible with the district so that it doesn't, I guess you might say, veer further from the characteristics of the, of the district. I'm not sure if I'm answering all of your question. You had something about scale and massing in there too, I believe.
Yeah, just looking at the, the quote that you took from the Boulder's code there, I, I, I think you kind of hit it on the head a little bit as far as you do have some flexibility. My concern is that if you have to design your, do an addition or renovation to a non-contributing property and you have to design something compatible within its current design materials, well, those materials and design may not be compatible with the overall historic district's materials and, and design scale. That, that was my original concern is, it seems like there needs to be a hierarchy between those. And it's not just both as absolutes.
So, so you're not tied to something that, that isn't really contributing in the first place, in other words, right?
Correct, or, or might hinder, you know, the
Right.
proportions or scale of the adjacent contributing building.
The standards, the standards have good examples for this. And a lot of it has to do with, I mean, a good example would be, you've got ten-foot floor heights right between the original historic buildings. You've got ten-foot floor heights. Well, people want to come in and maximize their floor heights and they do eight-foot floor heights. But then the window lines don't match up going down the street. The roof lines don't match up going down the street. Those are the things that negatively affect a historic district. The massing, the scale, not so much the materials, or you don't want to use metal next to brick, but you can use stucco. The standards go through there. It, you know, David, as an architect, it's still a matter of interpretation. But they follow, they would follow the design guidelines we have as, for downtown as well. But the standards were never set to be very prescriptive because they apply to the entire United States and it, and hundreds of different styles of architecture. So what they're really looking at is, you know, you just don't put a, a building that's so unusual or so different on your street that it destroys the entire character.
Detract might be a good word to use in the language, is that you don't want it to detract from.
You don't want it to detract. And, you know.
After of the district.
You can argue that the Van Shock, nude Van Shock building detracts from the rest of the, you know, early 20th century buildings that were on Main Street. But that was built in 1950, so now we have two different, and this is where it gets difficult. We have two different levels of significance as well. And, I mean, I could show you what happened to the Main Street apartments. If you look, if you remember what they looked like, right, across the street? Big, long building with the really large parapets on the top. When that project first came in, all the storefronts on the first floor were flush with the front. There was no signboards, there's no delineation. They all had vertical windows. And when I reviewed it for the city, I recommended that they do inset door, inset entryways, put signboards across, across the board, go more with horizontal windows. Because I was looking at the other buildings on, on Main Street. And those simple changes, which the architect took every one of them, makes the building a little bit more compatible with what we have down there, except for the big East Coast-looking parapet cornices that they put up on it. And the fact that all the details are made out of fiberglass, styrofoam. You know, stucco coated styrofoam, but I do have a picture of the original building. So that was a change that really helped on that, that entire block. But we'll have time to discuss this when we get into a project. And, and there's a lot of training, CPI's training. We, I mean, Andrea and I were in a session. They always have these sessions, the CPI. And they're fun because the architects do it. Do you agree or do you not agree with the solution? And they describe what they did and everybody gets to raise their hand. And believe me, no one is always in agreement on this stuff. So.
I, I think that if the city adopts Secretary of Interior Standards, that we would look to get some training on it for all of us.
All right, is there any more discussion or, or Andrea, are you ready to move on?
Yes, let's see. Okay, so, let's see. Now we move on to types of projects and what is the appropriate review process for them. And I, I think as the board knows that currently in our code, most projects require board-level review. And what this can sometimes result in is a lot of smaller-sized projects needing to come to a public hearing, which is kind of time-consuming and costly for the applicant and also time-consuming for staff as well. We saw that with the Littleton mixed-use building, that as they were making, as they were constructing the building and getting in tenants and discovering little problems here and there, we had to have a lot of certificates of appropriateness come forward to the board that may have been appropriately handled by staff and allowed more time for other historic preservation work if they had been. So this is a chart that came from the report that Lisa Hood had worked on for when she was with, I think Clarion and Associates and did a project with Fort Collins. And I've elaborated on it a bit, and it's, it was included in your packet here. And so what we have here are different types of projects on the left. And then a determination, which I'm throwing out for discussion, whether they be board level or staff level. So in general, a lot of the, a lot of stuff that is visible from the public right of way would be board level unless it's just kind of a minor alteration. And then projects that would be at the rear of the building, unless they have a significant impact, would be reviewed by staff. And so I trust you've had an opportunity to, to review this chart and happy to begin discussion.
I guess I would say I feel like window changes are character-defining.
I agree.
I feel like that's a big one, and we had a lot of discussion about it for pliables.
Yeah, we've had a lot of hearings about windows. It's, that's right.
Yeah, railings and knee walls and replacement stairs, I'm not fussed about at all.
Agreed.
Windows, I would be. So I, I might siphon that one off and say the rest could probably be staff level. But I think windows would definitely be board level.
I mean, the only exception would be if it truly is like-for-like, same material. But how often does that happen?
Exactly.
I'm in agreement. Very often. Well, here's, so here's, here's another, another thing. I have learned that there are some communities that have said, okay, if you're going to change out a window on the front or even the first one or two windows that go back on the side elevations goes to the board. Anything further back than that thing could go to staff because less visible from the street.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a rear window, I don't know that I would be that concerned about it. But certainly anything on the facade, I.
And, and also notice that in, we're talking about number two, right?
Right. Yes.
It includes but not determined to be character-defining. So what my intent was, and we can clarify this, was that perhaps we're talking here about windows that are not original. Or windows that are not character-defining in that the replacement would be extremely visually close to the original.
I guess, you know, especially, you know, thinking of our downtown. I mean, I realize this is going to be, you know, not just the downtown area, but Yep. It, most windows have been replaced. I mean, that's just a fact of, of life in historic preservation world is windows are, are one of the first things that are replaced. And, you know, the, the windows that are in, and I'm going to go back to pliables because that's so recent and it, it did garner, you know, big discussion. Those were not original windows and yet, you know, some of us were, were concerned about, you know, that You know, that them being two panes instead of a single pane. Um. But again, you know, it it's the facade of the building. Um, it's a corner building, so you know, if you have. A corner building like that where. It has, you know, two visible sides. It carries that much more weight than a building that's kind of wedged in. I don't know, that's I just, when I see that, to me, that just kind of jumps out at me that that needs to be. Kind of siphoned off, but.
Yeah, I I would have to agree. Um, I think um some of the the most involved. And quite frankly contentious um issues that have come before the board have involved windows. Um, and windows that were not the original window that was being replaced. And um and also doors. Um, so I I would, I would absolutely um think that these these would be. Subject to board level review.
Um, so can you clarify then all uh window and 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 door replacements would be board level?
Um, not not on the entire building, but certainly on the facade and the the portions that are visible from the street.
Um, I have a concern about the windows too. Because that's, everything's about the windows. It's like the glasses on your face.
Yep.
But we have to have some flexibility. And so we had to look at these reviews from the citywide cult perspective, not just downtown. Um, when you're in a historic district, it's not just the front of the building you're concerned about anymore. What happens behind the building and inside the building affects an entire district because the district is not linear. It's it's got depth to it. So um, I would say. One of my suggestions I was gonna bring up later. Um, for the most part, leave it staff level, but I think we should have um. The opportunity for this, for this, for Andrea. To have an informal discussion with a member of the preservation board, the chair. Or another member when a project comes in. Just to see how far it really needs to go. So she has a, and and the staff has another opinion on preservation, whether we should take it to the. The board level or not, uh, just by involving a uh someone that has a bigger picture. And can break the ice because this is one where the X is going to be on the line, right? It's gonna be closer to the line on the windows, one side or the other. We know we've made, there's been mistakes made where developers have proposed a window and they did not put the one in that. Board agreed to. But you might be surprised how many original windows are downtown. Um, we have a hundred and fifty year old windows existing in downtown Littleton right now. So. Um, the buildings on Alamo Street pretty much have all their original windows. So and the two chimneys, the three chimneys, the one right at the ma- end of um Main Street, those windows are original on the second floor. So um, while they are replaced, they're replaced because no one maintains them. Not because they're bad. It's just windows will last a long time if you maintain them. But yeah. You have to have more, maybe more of a a medium discussion on the window side.
I heard some pretty strong feelings on on windows. Um, on, from H P B just on on this discussion this evening, so. Um, those, those, you know, openings. I heard some some pretty strong feelings that 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 should should go to the board.
I think you should do the replacement doors too, because we didn't, we have last year a huge discussion on the Mayfield building. When they wanted to change out the the windows and the doors on the sides also, they wanted to change the placement and replace some of the doors with windows and that kind of stuff. So I think doors and windows should be, should be a board level. I mean, that's, that's kind of a lot of things we've discussed.
Yeah, and I I see Amy's hand as well.
Yeah, my my question actually is about number seven, not number two, so I don't know if you're ready to move on yet.
Um, I still need a little more clarification, I think, on number two myself.
Okay.
So I'm gonna throw out an example. What about, for example, um homeowner? With uh individual landmark somewhere in the city who has nonhistoric windows. Who would like to replace them with um. Appropriate style new windows. Is that a board level? Project?
What do you mean by appropriate style windows? Like historically appropriate, like closer to what would have been there originally or they're just.
Closer to what would have been there originally, yes.
And they're in historic district?
Uh, well, they could either be in our one historic district or they could be one of the individual landmarks.
I would say that if they're going to that effort to do the research and replace the window to be compatible. That that can be a staff decision. I only say that because there's so much red tape and so much of preservation, the more we can reduce it and make. Property owners more comfortable, they can get things done without going through a board and bring up all the discussion. Perhaps the better, the better it would be. But it's a case by case basis.
Yeah.
And and it depends upon the significance of the building. I mean. We, let's, let's. Keep that in mind, how significant the building is, because if it's. If it's a run of the mill building that's just old, that's fine, but if it's a one of a kind mid-century modern building or something like that. Maybe we should look at it. The window issue is important because they are very expensive. And rarely does replacing ever pay, and people spend a lot of money. Replacing windows in their building and then they don't. Fix the rest of the structure because they've run out of money. I sent Andrea. A study by the National Trust, they just finished a window study in National Trust. Very detailed, showing the feasibility of replacing windows versus repairing. And we all know it, it's very clear, it's always better to repair a window than replace it. You never get your money back. And to do a really good window today, you're looking at, you know, three, five to seven hundred bucks a window to pop into a building. So.
I think some of it depends on how many windows too. You know, because it's. And a commercial building is different than a residential building.
Yeah.
Um. But the, I mean, the windows have so much to do with a building that um. But I, I mean, I agree with Rick that, you know, if if it's something where they're, they have documentation, this is what was there historically. They're trying to go back to that and, you know, we're always kind of called the hysterical preservation people and. You know, we, we want people to be, to realize that, you know, preservation is a good thing. Yeah, we don't want to make it more complicated for them.
Andrea, could you just do like uh under number two, just do like a subcategory like. Newer replacement stairs, railing gutters and uh knee walls would go to the staff level and then replacement doors and windows would go to board?
Replacement doors and windows can go to the board, uh but just to clarify. It sounds like at least some board members are talking about, there might be some projects that might be better at the staff level, so. We can get that piece ironed out.
Yeah, I I think we. Sorry. I think we probably could use some additional examples. I wonder if some other local governments have done some of this thinking for us. I I appreciate how much research you've already done. I don't want to add more to your plate, but. I feel like there could be a few at least cases back to Rick's earlier point, especially in a year where we're trying to. Broaden our preservation efforts. It would be nice if we could find those scenarios that would. That we could trust staff to handle because it's like for like or, you know, whatever, we can come up with. Something, I'm guessing, to to at least demonstrate our um. Uh, uh, just to make it a little easier on the applicants.
Is this something that one of um us board members could maybe check a little bit to, so that Andrea doesn't have to do all of this work?
I I'm happy to do, to to do the work on that. That's, that's not a problem. Um, but I I think I'd like to say what I've seen in a lot of codes is that. Staff has the ability to kick. Any administrative approval up to the board if it seems warranted. And whether it's been historic preservation or other types of applications in community development. I will tell you, my experience is that the planners will kick it up if there's a question. We don't want to be in the position of saying, oh, we approved it. Only to hear from the board and the community that they thought that it should have been a um. A public process. Planners are really about public process. In in a very um. Serious way.
So there's a couple categories that we can exempt or require. If the property owner is going for the Secretary of Interior standards, getting tax credits. Windows are a big deal. We probably want to look at it. But if the building is a non-contributing building in the district, and Laura bring up. You know, the Mayfield building and the effort put into those windows, that's a non-contributing building. The preservation board should not look at anything that happens on that building. I mean, it's done. Uh, the changes, any changes you make aren't going to improve or or be detrimental to the district. Um, at this time. Particularly where it was up on that building, so um. That's one where place you can differentiate pretty clearly would be uh non-contributing buildings. When there's replacement components. I will say, windows go back to the beginning of the secretary standards, they were the first things that were discussed. And in the nineteen eighties, it was the National Park Service. That forced the window manufacturers to start building, designing windows that were compatible. Um, and they responded. And today, if you go with a high end company, you can get. A window to match any historic profile. But it's, it costs money. You're not gonna go to Home Depot and buy those windows. So. I don't know. Further, David.
I I was just gonna say, I think I'm a little lost here, to be honest. You know, when I read number two. Yes, it talks about doors, windows, they're all very important character defining elements. But as number two is written, it is specifically states, but it's not determined to be character defining. So if this is. An element that maybe has already been replaced, so they're gonna re-replace it. That's already not a character defining item that really I don't see needs a board level review. I think if staff is more than capable to determine if if certain items are character defining. I think obviously if they are, it it should be a a board level review. But if not, then staff level to me seems more appropriate in time of efficiency for the applicant as well as for staff's time.
What will make this very easy is if the survey program that Chris has been working on with us. If we have that detailed survey for every building that defines a character defining features. It'll be very clear to Andrea what they are. And that's what you really need. You need that kind of level. And that program could get it pretty quickly. So, but yeah, you're right. You're right, David.
And and I just, um, again with windows, um, as as Chris pointed out. Most of the windows or many of them have been replaced, and I think one of the most contentious window issues. Um, in a contributing building, um, you know, those, the windows that uh were under discussion. Were replacement windows. Um, they were not the original windows, but um that was certainly a character defining. Um, uh, feature. Yes, Andy?
Oh, that, I think that's my question. My question was gonna be. We we do spend a lot of time talking about them, but. It seems like then we get to a point where where we say, well. It's not really contributing anyway, so. And and so I guess that's why when I saw the language. Determine not to be determined, not determined to be character defining and. Um, any alteration that would have a significant impact would require board level review. That gave me more comfort.
And I do, I like the idea of differentiating between contributing and non-contributing building.
That makes it a little easier, I think.
Well, unfortunately for Main Street, there's design guidelines and those really will be guiding Andrea where to go. Some of our discussion is off of Main Street and the rest of the city where we haven't established design guidelines. Littleton Boulevard, a lot of buildings there that we haven't defined. But again, it's only when a building is landmarked that we get into this, right? So we want to have people to designate their buildings.
Let's also consider uh mid-century modern residential buildings. So for example, should Arapahoe Hills ever become a local district? And subject to certificates of appropriateness. So those windows. It's not old growth wood. You're not talking about necessarily decorative glass. Uh, what's character defining about them is probably their shape and their placement. They might be original. But they might not be worth saving. And if a homeowner says, look, you know, it's just I, you know, I I found this window. That looks a lot like the window that I have, but it's energy efficient. Would, I think we would want to consider how that could be made a staff level uh application.
I agree.
Again, design guidelines help that a lot, Andrea. And there's a lot being written right now with mid-century modern. Because those windows aren't so easy to replace because they tend to be very large panes of glass. And um. Come, and it's more expensive in a way to do that than to get a stock window from a manufacturer to pop in there.
Yeah, a- and and my my example is that they are replacing it. In the existing opening. And in fact, they have found a window that is similar. That that's the type of uh project I'm suggesting we could consider. I would suggest that we consider for staff level. Review.
Yeah, I think with a little more explanation and guardrails like that, maybe the board would find more comfort. Possibly.
Okay, so how about I will uh. I will work on this a little bit further and this will come back to the board next month for further consideration. Before um it goes into draft form, because I think you guys maybe want to take a look at it a little bit more before it gets in that draft.
Yeah, can can I ask a quick question about number seven? Because I I think it's related, so. Change in roof material, I think for for some of the commercial buildings on Main Street. This, this probably isn't significant, but but we might want to add language to number seven. Similar to what you're using in number two, because, you know, for a residential building. I I think we would want to know that the that whatever roof material is being changed. Is not a character defining feature. As it might be with some of the residential properties.
Yes, we can, we can do that.
Thank you.
And so Andrea, do you feel that you have sufficient input?
I do. I probably I'll review this video and then we'll work on it and we'll we'll take another look next month.
It it really is a good idea. I appreciate your, you're making the effort to do it, Andrea.
Yeah, yeah, it's important stuff. Okay, so now we have those projects that do not require a certificate of historic appropriateness. And if the board has comments and thoughts, concerns on this, let's have a discussion on that.
Andrew, the only question I had on this list uh for you was on signage. I might, I know for historic grant, which, correct me if I'm wrong, does require an application for COA. Um, you can use that money for signage. Is is there anything in our historic code that does allow for certain buildings or or. Designations that require a review for signage? designations that require a review for signage?
Well, I suppose that if there were a historic sign attached to the building, and that was being proposed to be replaced, that would be, um, that would be elimination of a character-defining feature, and that would be a project that would go to the board. For the most part, uh, we are dealing with non-historic signs, and we have dealt with those as going uh through the sign code, the city's sign code, and leaving it at that. For Littleton, and I think many historic districts, downtown districts where there's signage, the idea has been that while the, the historic character of the buildings is what we're all after, that uh the street is representative of its time, and that signage helps to bring that forward. And so there's been a lot less focus on signage. But David, that's, it's a good point that our uh grant program does include money for signage, and those projects would continue to come before the board, and you would have an opportunity to comment on those um if, if uh city funds are to be used to help erect those signs.
Okay.
Perfect. Thanks for the clarification.
The other one I would just like to mention, we don't deal with interior work. But some buildings have significant interior finishes. I don't think, unless it's a s- uh tax project, we shouldn't get involved, but maybe we should be involved just to talk about general preservation informally with the owner. We could do it through the city staff as certain people. One example that I would say where an interior was saved and it works out well is at the uh View House, where they maintained the interior of that space. They ran columns through the support to second floor, but you go in there, that is what the space looked like with those bow arches and that original ceiling. And that adds a tremendous amount of character to a building when you have a, an original interior, and you have original interior finishes. Just like the little, um, that little store on Main Street near the Coors Building. I forget what it's called, but it's got all the little knickknacks and stuff. When you walk in there, you can see original material on the roof. Not only do you see it, but you smell it. And smelling is a very important part of uh a character-defining feature of a, um, a district. So I would just kind of, I don't know how many significant interiors we have in the city. There's probably not very many anyway. But if there is something, we'd want to save it. The courthouse is another great example. When that was restored, nobody really knew all those materials were underneath the finishes. And you can find a lot of stuff sometimes when you start removing pre-pass additions, because they just cover it up.
Uh, well, uh, my feeling is that uh we don't want to require the COA for interior work, but if we're interested in looking at significant interiors, maybe there's another section of code that deals with um assistance from the city and the board, and that assistance may be available to property owners to discuss uh significant historic interiors and their preservation.
Yeah, we have to be careful. We're not doing just facade-saving in the whole city. Preservation's more than just a front, street-facing part of the building. But I don't, I can see some, many of our mid-century modern houses though have the original interior in them. So. But, uh, and the post office does. It has the original nineteen sixties interior. Actually has both the forty-two and the sixties in there, so. But not many other buildings that I can see. Short of sandblasting, or the stucco off a brick and having the brick exposed, which is poor preservation practice.
Yeah, I think, but the bottom line is, um, we, we can't do anything about interior work on a structure the way our code is written today. And, um, you know, so the, a- anything that we do on the interior, any encouragements, or, you know, pointing them towards resources or something, that has to be on an informal basis. Is that right?
Yeah, I would suggest that, like Andrew said, it'd be advisory. I mean, our goal is to preserve historic fabric and character. I mean, all the codes don't deal with interior work. I mean, Denver doesn't deal with it. Nobody deals with it, because that was getting, that was going too far, unless you have significant, significant features. But those developers and people who understand what they have, they will usually save those significant features. So that's usually not a problem. And if it's a tax project, you get reimbursed for saving those things. So it's pretty lucrative in that case. We don't have too many of those kind of buildings in Littleton. So I don't see uh it a big issue coming up in Littleton, but there might be a few cases.
Yeah, I think it's different if a building is significant for something on the interior, like a mural, like the, you know, post office. A lot of the post offices have murals. And so there, that is specifically called out in a nomination form. Um, but typically, y- you know, it's not the purview of, of, you know, an HPP or an HC, HPC to, um, you know, have any kind of say-so over what happens on the interior.
I, in the post office, I did call out the interior in the lobby. Um, but that's a very different case, and it's a federal building. It's a government building. It's not a private building that's been remodeled over and over again, so. I don't see it as a huge issue, actually, and I would make it advisory unless it's a tax project, so. And if it's a tax project, they're gonna come to us anyway, because they have to. All right. Other than that, I think this is good to get us away from all this stuff, Andrea.
Okay. Kim, we?
Yes, uh, if there's no more discussion on this point, um, Andrea, please feel free to move on.
Okay, so done with that item? Kim?
Okay. My papers are spread out here. Um, okay, so you're done with B on our agenda. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we are now moving forward to um C, which is summary information from CPI's Saving Places Conference, um, which is basically reports uh or comments, um, you know, things that uh the folks that attended the conference would, would like to bring up. Um, and, and I'll just preface all the remarks with, um, uh, you know, thank you to the city and to um the State Historic Fund, I believe, is what uh provided the grant um that enabled um uh folks from Littleton to attend CPI. Is that, is that right, Andrea? Do I have the granting agency correct? You're muted, Andrea.
Um, it is um Colorado Historical uh Society, or Colorado His- History Colorado, that provides the grants that we get most years.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, um, who attended CPI? If we could just have a show of hands? Chris, Andy, Kim, Rick, I know, attended, and Andrea. So would like, someone like to start with observations, Rick?
Well, first Andrea, I mean, Kim, did you want to look at the criteria? Real quickly? Does everybody want to do that, or is it too late?
Well, I, I will ask Andrea. Um, do you want to do a, a discussion of the criteria?
Kim, I believe it's your call.
Um. Let's see what time it is. Okay, it's eight oh seven. Um, I'm gonna throw it out to the board. What do you want to do? Shall we move forward with a discussion? Andy, your hand is up?
Well, I was gonna say, I, as soon as you mentioned it, I just wanted to see it. I, would, is it something that we can have emailed to all of us? We have time to read it and think about it? Um, maybe a quick overview of it by Rick to sort of set it up?
I could show it to you and explain how I differentiated putting this stuff in. And then if we can email it to everybody, then you can look at it. But at least you understand my methodology, so you understand how I arrived at it real quickly.
Okay, um, now, what about sharing the information on your screen?
I'm ready to go. Just give me the word.
Can Rick share his screen, or Andrea, are you gonna have to pull it up and share it?
You should be able to hit share screen at the bottom.
Okay, let's see, where is it?
At the bottom. Put your cursor down towards the bottom. It should pop up in green.
There it is.
No?
Yes, you got it.
There it is.
Okay, so this is the entire section three. So it's compiled from our code, the MODEL code, and the City of Fort Collins code, and each one is in a different color. The blue is for the conservation overlay districts, which I looked up, that many cities are using. Conservation overlay districts preserve historic areas, but it really removes the Historic Preservation Board from managing it, which is really a nice option. Uh, so here, everything in black is from the MODEL code. Everything in orange I took from the um City of Fort Collins. Though we want to say that it's forty, okay, so this is from the City of Fort Collins, which we discussed. And then the blue is MODEL code stuff. So as you go through it, you can just see where I popped in uh Fort Collins stuff. The black is the MODEL code, very little change there, really. Uh, it's mostly more descriptive, descriptive e- elements from the MODEL code, from the Fort Collins. And then yellow is stuff we have in our code from the two thousand and twelve code. There's only two items. So that's basically what it is. Pretty simple. You can kind of read it, and we can discuss it uh to see how you feel about the language that's in there.
I, I kind of like to have that emailed, so I could read it and discuss it next month.
Mm-hmm, we could do that, yes. The black is what's in the MODEL code, so we probably don't want to eliminate the MODEL code stuff. But the other colors are our choice to add into it. Um, the MODEL code just didn't go into a whole lot more detail. Um, well, here's a definition of integrity, Laura, too.
Thank you.
There's seven aspects to it, so it's there. So anyway, we can email and discuss it next month. That would be fine. A- Andrea has a copy of this, so she could send it out.
And, uh, and also, um, Rick, the, the, the stuff in yellow that is currently in our code is stuff that we want to incorporate going forward as well.
Um, if we want to. I just put it, I just put the stuff in, because this is stuff that addition, though, we had in our code that, um, the other codes didn't have. So uh it's up to the board to determine if we want to include those or not. No one else had the addition, the significant remodel issue, uh, which Andrea had put in in two thousand and twelve in the code. And then, um, I don't know why this last one was in here, non-contributing elements. But that was put into the two thousand and twelve code, too, so we can talk about that.
Andrea, do you, can you answer that question?
It has to do with historic districts, so.
You know, um, if, that was a project that Dennis Wayne had taken over. He was the city's Historic Preservation Planner for a number of years, and uh that was something that, that he worked with. So I'm sorry, I can't, he's now retired, so I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
So if you look at the description of this, it really would be addressed by the Secretary of Interior Standards. They just added a little bit more stronger language. It had probably had more to do with the politics at the time of the revisions to the code in two thousand and twelve.
But, but I can see how that makes sense, that, you know, if you have, you know, like our downtown district, and somebody wants to come in and put a four-story or a six-story building, we do want them to consider the size, the scale, the location of the building. Even if, we know it's gonna be non-contributing, because it's, you know, it's gonna be a brand-new building, or they're gonna build on to, you know, an existing building that's non-contributing, um.
Yeah, so I think we can discuss that all. The one thing that the MODEL code does, like up here, for, um, distinctive characteristics and type of material, method, construction, they didn't provide any definition. They're leaving it up to the individual cities to add on to this. So we can, we can modify this if we don't think it applies to Littleton. Boulder had dissertations for each one of these. We don't want to do that, right? You want to keep it to a minimum. You don't want to make it so difficult that it's hard to understand. But it does follow the National Register uh criteria, so. Um, we, we email it out, and it'll be a good discussion for next month.
Thank you, Rick.
Can we email that out sooner rather than later, so that we have enough time to digest it?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okey-dokey.
All right, and, and that, um, emailing it and having everyone kind of go through it and be prepared to discuss next month, Andrea, does that give you adequate time as far as incorporating it into um the, the document and um moving forward on our timeline?
Sure, it does.
It does? Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
All right, um, let's see. Now we're ready to go on to CPI Savings Places, um, comments. What did we learn and anything that we can take back to, to Littleton? Um, who, who wants to start?
You want to go and order the presentations?
Um, well, Rick, it sounds like you, you have written down a, a lot of things. Do you want to just go ahead and start?
Yeah, I wrote down a lot, but I'm not gonna talk about a lot.
Okay.
The kickoff session, or the keynote, let's see, I can't remember what day it was.
It was probably on Wednesday.
Joe Man- Manakusi was the speaker. I've heard him a few times. He's from Asheville, um, North Car- uh, South Carolina. And he's, he's an architect. Did go to University of Miami, so that's good, but, um, he approaches looking at cities in a very different way. And he approaches it from a tax-based standpoint, which is very interesting. So how do you value, he looks at how do you value the significance or the contribution of an old building to a city compared to new structures? And what he's been doing is he looks at the revenue produced from a building, property taxes, sales taxes, ties it to the square, the, the revenue per square foot of the building per acre. And when you start doing that, you realize that your small businesses, and it's all about supporting small businesses, have a much greater tax and revenue impact on a city than your big boxes, because it's the amount of revenue per square foot per, um, compared to an acre. So take a little building downtown Littleton, like Willow's, that thousand square feet, right? You would determine the ta- the, the revenue from that building over the thousand square feet, then multiply to be equal to the revenue it would produce if it were an acre. And you compare that to any big box, and all the small businesses outperform the big boxes every time. And the cities have gotten it backwards. And he said, we just look at the tax, we look at the way we taxed the wrong way, because we don't value, um, existing buildings. He also said that existing buildings have three times the value of any new building. And a lot of this has to do with our tax laws, where developers build new buildings to de-appreciate it as fast as possible, so it doesn't And a lot of this has to do with our tax laws, where developers build new buildings to de-appreciate it as fast as possible, so it doesn't produce any revenue. You can't do that with an old building because there's nothing to de-appreciate, right? So we get in binds and where um, you're not getting good architecture that lasts a long time, which is detrimental to the city. And a good example was um, Walmart. Walmart built a building to last fifteen years. That's it. They don't care because they depreciated after fifteen years. The tax savings they get and property taxes by depreciating is more beneficial to them than building a brand new building every fifteen years. Believe it or not, but th- this is pretty incredible, the way he talks about all this. He he talked about roads, very interesting. Most cities compare, consider roads as assets. Roads are liabilities. You can only be an asset if you can get a return on your investment. No road ever returns an investment. It's always a liability because it always needs to be repaired. So when when you're looking at cities and how to preserve their character, you got to get away from the road building and focus on building buildings and saving buildings. The other thing he said was very interesting on um, and he's talking about, if this is all about revitalizing small downtowns. Is that um, you want to go up, you want to maximize floor area by going up. But he said, you don't have, for most places, three stories is all you need to do to greatly increase your revenues, property tax and stuff. Uh, in a city, you don't have to go um, that much higher. And he said, six stories is like the maximum. And what he's, the point he's making is when you're revitalizing downtowns, you don't have to go any higher than six stories to maximize the property tax and sales tax revenues. And what he does, which is very interesting, if you look them up. Is he creates these bar graphs of a city. And he basically shows where all the revenue is and all the downtowns look like lower Manhattan and the residential areas look like farmland. Because residential areas never are a winning proposition for a city. They do not return enough tax money to justify paying for this or operating of a city. You need the businesses to do that. So he's getting, he's getting more um, getting around a lot more and talking about this. He did that in Durango. A couple of years ago, he he he's a consultant that will come to your city. And Durango, he proved to the city council that all the expansions they did to the south of Durango, and if everyone's been down, you know where all that is, right? Produces like a tenth of the tax revenue of downtown, of the downtown area of Durango. But where does all the tax benefits go from cities? They go to the new stuff and not to the old stuff. And so he's getting cities to start switching things around and stop this expansion. It's very interesting um, to look at at his graphics. And I think he might have spoke here, but from the board standpoint, it might be something we might want to look at having um, the city, maybe have them do a study for Littleton and show us where our tax revenues really are. So then we we will know what, where we need to spend our efforts. And basically, that's going to be in the older area. And the one extreme example he gave, which was really kind of shocking, but it's extreme. Is in Washington DC. He showed a little building that was eight feet wide. I think it's in, I don't know where it was in Washington DC, but it was a an eighteen thirties house, eight feet wide, three stories. When you took the value of that property and tied it to an acre, it had an acre value of seventy-four million dollars. Because it only took up, you know, eight hundred square feet, so eight hundred square feet into a an acre of land. So what he's, what he's basically saying is we got to support our small businesses. That's where it's all at. It's all in the old downtowns. And we've all seen the statistics, right? There's four thousand counties in the United States. And seventy percent of the revenue is produced by fifty percent, fifty of those counties. Well, it's the same in the states too. It's always the the more dense, higher density areas, the urban areas that produce revenue over uh, the rest of the states. But it's another way just to look at um, preservation.
Rick, I want to second your um, your recommendation. I think it would be great to have him come and look at our data and our figures and maybe we have, and I just didn't catch it. Um, it might be good timing too, when we're talking about updating the land use code and probably would have been great to have him a year ago, but even now, it might be good to sort of um, reframe how we look at density and and how it impacts us and uh, might even help us with our historic district.
It's all reframing. And a good example was um, that I saw in last envision. Is this the way the city def- uh, calculates the tax revenues, they split Littleton Boulevard right down the middle. So the north side goes up to Bellevue and the south side goes who knows how far where, but it doesn't really show you graphically what the tax benefit and sales tax benefit is of Littleton Boulevard because of split. So you're you, you've obviously seen them Andy, and I think that's something we should recommend to come to the city, not just for preservation, but all, everything that we're doing in our city right now, right?
Um, it it was a very powerful presentation. Um, and I know that uh, the sessions were taped. Um, they they were recorded, probably not taped, but um, and I wonder um, what our access might be to that session. Um, i- if we could contact um, CPI and ask if if we could, you know, view that um, in the city with city staff or HPP or something like that. In the session, I I, gosh, I, you know, it wasn't a a super, super long session, but um, that that might be a worthwhile thing if we if we would be allowed to do that.
Yeah, I know they're all going to be available, but I don't know if it's only to the attendees or the general public now, so. We could ask Jennifer. Jennifer told me I'd be able to watch the ones I was, I had to miss, so um, there must be a way to do it.
Well, I I I'm aware that um, those that attended the the conference and paid, you know, money was paid is, that's for sure. Uh, but as for uh, bringing it forward to um, a different group, we'd have to look into that.
Yes, I I don't know what the the ramifications would be of that.
No, it could be that in a board meeting, I pull it up because I went and then we look at it, right?
He's he's got a million presentations on YouTube that I can send a link, but the real value of Joe Manicuzzi is when he comes and does the study of your properties, your town, shows you your figures. And it it's eye-opening, um, but it does cost money, so. And then in the interest of time, I'll stop, but I do, I do like him.
A- Andy, I would just suggest if you have access to some of his presentations, forward those graphs. We don't need to see anything else but those graphs of that he does, which are pretty incredible. Okay.
I think um, I'll I'll uh, ask, let's see, um, the next person I'm seeing that went to the conference is Andy. So what would you like to to throw out?
Hey, um, I had a few takeaways. One one was um, there was a session that talked a little bit about community engagement and telling the story of um, you know, all the inhabitants past and present. Um, a lot of the history that we uh, landmark and designate and talk about is like white settler history. It's not really the full picture. And um, I went online during the session just to see what Littleton had on our site as far, because I'm not aware of you know, any um, underrepresented voices or groups and their history and and the, you know, the deeper history of Littleton. And I did see some stuff on there about how in the twenties, like everywhere else in Colorado, the KKK was actually quite strong here in Littleton. I saw that on our page. I was happy to see some of that whole history of that truth um, added to our our resources. And I just was going to pose to the board, I would love to learn more about um, our history in Littleton that maybe you guys know, but I I haven't heard as far as, you know, minorities or civil rights, um, you know, work that was done here or any other sort of significant different um, histories from different cultures, things like that. That's one of my takeaways.
Yeah, I I am, I I was struck by this, the same thing. And I know in talking with Chris, I I don't see her on the screen right now, but um, we both had the same thing. And Littleton is changing, you know, we're we're seeing development and and I'm, so I'm thinking, you know, how do we capture the stories right now from northeast Littleton and the Littleton Boulevard neighborhoods? Um, and uh, you know, just just the various, various neighborhoods in town that are changing. So um, and then Chris, are you still on? I know Chris, Chris was thinking that she might have to drop off. Um, and uh, Andrea, would you like to throw out anything from your um, attendance? Were you struck by anything in particular?
I actually didn't attend this year.
Oh, you didn't? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I saw your name on stuff. So, okay. Um, and then I I um, you know, had, interestingly, had written down um, the sessions that we've already talked about. But um, there uh, there was a lot of attention paid to um, you know, avoiding displacement. Um, a- as communities change and grow and um, you know, hi- historic preservation needs to be mindful of the the people that are already there right now. And I think that's important. And and one is is just um, and we saw this uh, in some of the stuff that they're doing in Denver. Um, it's matching the standards to the reality in the neighborhoods. Um, and providing adequate uh, flexibility in uh, in historic areas. Um, that and that can, you know, prevent the displacement, the loss of the people. Where you, you know, save the buildings and you lose the people who are actually living in the neighborhood. Um, and you know, you're able to really conserve the smaller, older housing stock, which is is very important. Um, and when we're talking about densification um, that we're talking about in Littleton right now, um, you always have to be mindful of maintaining and encouraging um, social and and housing equity. And my favorite takeaway was um, a discussion of of some of the modern um, uh, development that has gone on in the the post-war period. And um, really developing an appreciation for the vernacular modern. Which is is basically um, just, we have blocks and blocks and blocks of vernacular modern here in in Denver. And it was um, you know, the the developments that were built in the post-war period in the uh, you know, late forties, uh, early nineteen fifties that aren't really quote mid-modern. Um, but they're the, you know, typical um, you know, merchant builders that would build an entire development and um, you know, uh, they had the incinerator at the back on the alley and stuff like that. And that's, that's what much of Littleton is. And and to really um, start to have an appreciation of, I'm going to start calling it vernacular modern. So um, that that was one of my favorite takeaways, a little bit of love for our housing stock. Um, are there any other comments about uh, CPI? And in that way, it was a virtual conference. And quite honestly, I thought it just went off without a hitch. Um, I I thought they did a really good job. And um, you know, I I I know that must have been a a kind of a a tough endeavor, but I think that they 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 did a terrific job with it. Um, and it wa- it was, it was nice to be able to attend. And it was especially nice to attend virtually on Friday when it was so miserably cold. So Andy, you had your hand up.
Just one more question, I I I can ask somebody later too, but there was that session about um, Fort Collins was talking about their energy efficiency, renewable energy goals and 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 talking about barriers um, for renewable energy in the codes, when especially when it comes to historic buildings. Um, and even just general barriers uh, in the building code to to renovate or rehabilitate existing buildings. I think it could be a cool, I I would like to learn more about that for Littleton. Like what are our barriers that we could maybe um, lend some expertise or some help on? Or maybe the city's already dealt with all those, but I know there's state working groups working on it for other communities, so I was just curious and wanted to raise it. I mean, it's eight thirty now. I don't know if we have time for a lengthy discussion, but maybe at some future point, I'd love to learn more.
I'll put that down for future discussion.
So I have two to talk about. One, we're both critical to us. When I went to the tax credit session. And of course, we know there's a thirty percent federal tax, twenty-five percent federal tax credit, right? What I didn't realize was because of COVID nineteen, they created all these um, um, what are they called? Distressed areas, right? Um, the entire country is a distressed area. So for the next five years, they increased the tax credits to thirty percent on historic buildings, okay?
Five years?
For the next five years. Now, you know, there's a ton of paperwork to go through here, but it was pretty amazing that that this is out there. And one of the people who talked about this was Ariel Steele, and Andy, maybe you've heard her name. But Andy, she specializes in tax credits. And there were a lot of things I didn't realize. Um, and there's tax credits for facades. Historic Littleton could actually buy someone's tax credit, right, for a building? If we had the money, right? We could buy the tax credit from those people and then we can sell those credits on the open market. The city of Littleton could buy, could buy a facade and sell those credits on the open market and get the revenue back. And there's all these different tax credits that are out there. Um, and it might be worthwhile to have Ariel Steele come to a public presentation and talk to us um, about all these tax credits that are there. And they they come off the conservation tax credits, land conservation tax credits and all that. But it was pretty amazing. And um, people don't realize how much of your building rehab can actually apply uh, to the tax credits. Um, if you're in a, if you have to add a elevator on inside your small building, a little lift, that would apply for the tax credit to make the building usable. It's things that make the building usable, not in addition to the building, but I I look at the Littleton Savings and Loan building, which doesn't have an elevator, he could pop a little lift in there for ten grand and take thirty percent of it off. I mean, that's real money, right? So one thing that we we talk about incentives in Littleton. We need to be more versed on all these different kinds of credits. Because there are people out there that invest in buying these things. And we can maybe market buildings for investors to come and buy the credits and then the owner gets the money back, invest in into the buildings. Pretty pretty amazing to me. Um, the other one I went to was very interesting, was city of Fort Collins has cre- is in the process of doing a preservation plan. And we're talking about doing a preservation plan here, right? Um, I have a ton of notes, but that one is very interesting because and they even admitted it, you know, city of Fort Collins is very conservative. So how would you do a preservation plan in the city of Fort Collins, right?
Um, excuse me, Rick, isn't that Colorado Springs?
Colorado Springs, yeah, no. Yeah, Colorado Springs. So they, they're growing so much, they decided they needed to do this preservation plan. And what I didn't realize is their preservation board has no authority. It's purely advisory. They don't have any quasi-dutual. The council makes all the decisions. So in a way, they're kind of freed up a little bit than we are. But they're doing this preservation plan. It costs them about sixty grand. But one thing they said that, you know, you have to involve the entire city. You have to start looking at all the different aspects of what's in the city. Not just historical stuff. So they were looking at their agricultural history, their manufacturing history, the pottery, not just the buildings downtown. I I was thinking in terms of Littleton, where we focus on buildings, but we have a very significant history that we can tell in Littleton that would be part of a preservation plan. Creation of the South Platte Park. That had national implications that originated from Littleton. You know, our sewage treatment plant, the combination of it with Anglewood has big implications just from the way our city grew after the fifties. And so when we do a preservation plan, we should be talking about And so when we do a preservation plan, we should be talking about all these other aspects of history. But they made some interesting comments. Um, the plan has to have teeth. If it doesn't have teeth that's enforced, then it's not useful to do. So if we do a plan, we have to be willing to enforce the plan. They met with many neighborhood organizations, which was really good. They did, um, they said the board needs courage in advocating and promoting preservation. We need to be out there promoting it. And, um, if you don't do it, it's not going to happen. They said in their plan, uh, to use overlay zones, they're using that in Colorado Springs. Um, the plan has to have practical applications. It can't be aspirational. Aspirational doesn't go anywhere, so it has to be real defined. And I know we want to do this plan sometime in the future. The plan has to help, uh, do your cultural identity or your heritage identity of your community. So you're looking at the whole broad aspects of what makes Littleton good and great and, and not just, um, not just the buildings. I mean, we were a, the number one city to live in by Better Homes and Garden in nineteen sixties. Why did we attain that status at one time? Um, we need to go back and look at some of this stuff and make it part of our plan, which I see as enforcing our envision plan, enforcing our comp plan and how we go about, um, moving forward with keeping Littleton a viable community. They said, when you have preservation re- regulations, the city has to take the lead and they have to start enforcing them. So if your building's landmarked and you don't do the right thing, you've got to start enforcing them, enforcing the people to follow the regulations. Otherwise you don't have any teeth. I mean, it's a balancing act, but you know, if you designate a property, we want to save it, right? People who have designated properties are getting the public benefit. So it's a push and pull each way. Um, now we have the railroad depression project was precedent setting in Littleton to have the foresight to, to go ahead, not only build it, but make it wide enough for light rail. Though the forty trains a day have never materialized, thank God. They also said you want to do windshield surveys and even though you hire consultants, you need people from the community to participate in these plans because they know the community, they know the history. And you tie it all together and it requires a lot of, uh, outreach. They did a lot of meetings and they said, one thing they did, which is really cool, which we've been doing a little bit. Um, keypad polling on all kinds of things. We've been doing those sort of in your, our webinars on Envision, right? So they said you start doing keypad polling and what happens when you start doing that? Because you have a diverse group of people and in Colorado Springs, they made no, no bones. We got really conservative people. We got people in the middle. We got all these new people on the left side that come in. But everybody had the same goal of preserving the character. When you do keypad polling, it kind of levels out the extreme ends and gets you into the middle where everybody can start making a decision where you want to go forward. And I think we did that, we did that in our envision planning two years ago. Uh, we did that. So I think the next thing that we do, which is this preservation plan is a way to, um, involve a whole lot more of the city. The one thing that's not happening is they did it before they updated their, their ULUC. We're going to do it the other way because it's just the way it is and that's just what happens. But I know Jennifer and Andrea want us to do a plan in the future. And I think, um, watching this, this, this presentation and seeing how they went about it would give us a really good foundation for how we can plan our plan. And their plan was sixty thousand dollars and they got grants from the CLG, the State Historic Fund, City of uh, Colorado Springs and some private people to fund their plan and a lot of public involvement. So that's, that's a, that's the three that I have.
Okay. Well, that's great. Uh, thank you. I mean, it, it, it was, it was a terrific conference and I'm, I'm so glad that we, um, that it was worth our while to attend. Um, and it sounds like we are bringing, bringing some things back to Littleton, especially, um, if we can investigate, um, if, if there's any way to view, um, some of the presentations by Joe Maniuchi, is that his name?
Joe Manicosi.
Yes, yes. Um, and, uh, he, he did, he did the keynote and he also led a session, um, which I guess we would be able to watch if, if we attended. Um, but yeah, it would be great to find out if we, if we could have access to that.
We should see how much he costs.
Yeah, yeah, really.
It would, we would, it would be well worth the money for the city. I know we're strapped, but it would be well worth the money to hear that.
Yeah. Um, okay. So, uh, just in the interest of time, because it's getting on towards nine o'clock. Um, uh, Community Development Director and Staff, do we have, have any reports to discuss?
We do.
Oh, good.
This was a great conversation. I really appreciated being able to listen in on it. And so many of the things that you're talking about are things that staff has been discussing. And as we go through the ULUC project, you know, trying to integrate as much as we can. Um, and on, in that, uh, vein, I just wanted to give you guys an update, um, on where we are with ULUC. Thank you to all of you that participated, um, in our most recent Envision Studio. Um, we have another one coming up in March. I think it's the tenth, but Kathleen will correct me if that is not correct.
It is. You'll have a, uh, invitation to register for March tenth. And we're going to shift the time a little bit. We got some feedback in the last studio to try and move that beyond normal work hours. So we're going to nudge it to five o'clock. So it'll be on Wednesday, the tenth, and that invitation to register will, should arrive in your inbox in the morning.
Yes. So we have that. And, um, also I'm going to have, I have Kathleen here. So she's going to kind of talk about how we're going to be integrating the work that you guys have been doing. Thank you for all of the time that you've put into that and how we're going to, um, move that into the ULUC. Um, and then I also wanted to give you an update. I know we got a lot of feedback when we were doing the corridor Envision Studios on, hey, we have some amazing resources and great, um, you know, elements on Littleton Boulevard. And how is this code going to address that? So, um, please know that you, your concerns, um, and importance on that has been heard. So we're looking at different tools, um, that we can use to, to protect those, um, protect those elements along Littleton Boulevard. So stay tuned. Um, but we are working on that and, and heard you guys loud and clear and, and feel the same way. So, um, with that, Kathleen, you want to talk about a little bit how we're going to be integrating, what all the hard work they've been doing?
I know. So big thank you for, for all the hard work. Um, one of the things that is sort of a new development in our relationship with Kennedy Keith Collaborative is that a new member of their team just started this week. And she actually comes from being mentored by Norrie Winter, which is a familiar face for many of you. I think some of you may know that Norrie retired and, um, so a member of his staff has now joined Kennedy Keith Collaborative. And this is going to be her item to kind of take on how we incorporate the, the HP code and incorporate all of your great work. So Andrea, Jennifer and I'll have the chance to kind of, uh, touch base with her and get, uh, a greater sense of her timeline. But I think that that gives us a lot of confidence in being able to come back to you conceptually with where we think the, the code is kind of headed. Obviously you've spent a lot of time with, um, this model code. So, um, you know, we're in a great, great position, uh, to meet our timeline that you've outlined for the downtown historic district. Um, I think it continues to be a priority for council. They, um, have changed the way in which they kind of tackle their goals this year. Typically they do a one-day retreat and they've opted to do a series of study sessions. If you've been following along, um, you know that they've had a pretty robust conversation about the financial sustainability of the city. They've confirmed that the Unified Land Use Code is their number one top priority. And we are still in the process of scheduling the conversation relative to downtown, um, housing and livability, environmental stewardship, good governance. So as, as we know more on, on direction, um, we'll keep this group apprised in case there is any overlap relative to, to what council is looking to tackle over the next couple of years with that downtown, um, sort of scope of work that they're, uh, considering as part of their work plan for the next two years. And then I would just, um, mention that it is such a great partnership with them having provided the direction for the downtown historic district to us staff and then to just know that we have such incredible support from this committee. It really does make a huge difference. So again, our thanks, not only for the HP code pieces, but for all the work up until this point and all of the work that is yet to come relative to, to that district.
All right. Um, thank you. Um, so let's see, next up, we're looking at, uh, an update on the Little, I'm, I'm sorry, Andrea?
Yes, Littleton Legacy List. Yes, okay.
Yes. Okay, Littleton Legacy List.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm, I'm sorry that board member Lisa Hood isn't here tonight because, uh, she's worked so much on, on this project, but we can catch up with her later. Um, but I wanted to let the board know that we've had some very good discussions with staff, meaning, uh, Mike, Kathleen and Jennifer on the Littleton Legacy List. Everyone was so, um, impressed with the work that, that, you know, Laura and Lisa and the rest of you, I think there's some, been some others of you have helped with that too. A very, very impressive project and we're thinking about how best to position it. Uh, because right now we have a lot of projects, as we all know, coming through the city. And so how does the, how does the project have its own, uh, room to breathe and to really make its way out into the community? And, and, uh, for people to be able to, um, realize that it's out there and have the time to, to take a look at it. So, um, what we thought is that, um, since we have the historic district in the works and we're also working on the historic preservation code, we'd like to hold off momentarily on rolling it out. And we believe that the moment to start rolling it out comes after the adoption of the ULC, which includes the HP code and the, um, historic district. Once we have the code in place, um, it's like we have an opportunity almost for a new beginning in, with the historic preservation program in Littleton. You know, some of you know, there have been some hard times before, but things have been really kind of on a roll here. And with the new code in place and the new, um, district, assuming that, that too is approved, um, will be in a great place and that, um, there will be some real advantages to holding off. So one is that the project doesn't get lost with all the other projects going on. Um, another advantage is that if we are putting out historic district materials and Littleton legacy materials, particularly all in the downtown, that could be kind of confusing for some people. Well, which one am I and how do they relate to each other? And they are kind of two different things. Um, if we wait, we have time for more planned and elaborate rollout, rollout. Staff will have more time to work on that and to follow up with people who, um, may be interested in looking at designating their properties. And with the new code in place, it will be easier for us to sell to them the idea of designating their property as a historic landmark. Because the code will be streamlined and easier to read and frankly, just better policy document. So that's what we're thinking, um, that will hold off for the moment and the timeline would look something like this. In October, the ULUC and downtown historic district are approved. And then in two thousand twenty-two, sometime during the first quarter, that will be the rollout of the Littleton Legacy List. Following that, uh, in two thousand twenty-three, um, we are looking at a historic preservation strategic plan, also known as a preservation plan. That will be the first for the city of Littleton to have such a plan. And all that work that is done on the Littleton Legacy List will help strengthen what we can do with that strategic plan because we know, of course, more about what our historic resources is across the, across the community. And then eventually, um, well, not too soon after that, uh, we hope to have a new update to the city's comprehensive plan. Um, Kathleen can talk more about that, but, uh, we're not really looking at waiting however many decades before we update the comp plan again, become more of a regular thing in the city. And, and that the work that we do with the, um, strategic plan can feed into the citywide, uh, comprehensive plan. And so that we feel that this is a way for things to line up very nicely. Um, and we're hoping that, um, the board agrees with it and happy to entertain questions. And I'd also like to ask Jennifer and Kathleen if you'd like to add anything to it, to what I've said.
Yeah, I think you, you summed it up perfectly. I mean, we're, you know, obviously the twenty-one budget is a two-point-one million dollar cut. So, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, what's going to be possible in those out years. We anticipate a comprehensive plan being in front of a council for consideration of adoption in two thousand twenty-five. Um, so we would probably crack that open, you know, sometime in twenty-four, um, depending on kind of how, uh, and where we are as a city and what that community process will look like, because we'll, we'll hope to mirror a lot of that very robust community input that, that we saw with the adoption of the two thousand nineteen plan. And that would put us in that five-year best practice, which is the goal that the, the city is, is working towards. I think for us, you know, it's very similar to how the city had done work on a, um, housing plan and a housing set of recommendations. And then how those got basically rolled into and adopted as part of the comprehensive plan. We see a very, very similar path with this next update and how historic preservation is included in that. So, um, for us, it, and in addressing what capacity needs, we're going to need over the next couple of years from, from Jen and her team, this, this seems like the, the best and most strategic approach to, to delivering the, the end result of getting all of that wrapped up into the comprehensive plan.
I'd like to add one more thing, um, which I meant to say before, that we felt that the plan, that the Littleton Legacy List is so good, Oxford is such a good start with the format and the lushness and the funness of all of it, that once we start using that and plugging it on to all these different city programs and how staff can use it in, in neighborhood and corridor plans, that we may potentially have an award-winning program on our hands. And, uh, you know, we could feel really good about that and, and, and see, and offer it up as, uh, inspiration to other communities to follow along with what we did.
Okay. Oh, yes, Rick, please.
Jennifer and Kathleen don't know this. I'm in the process of, um, updating the historic Littleton website because it hasn't been updated and I have a section in there on resources. I'm linking a lot of stuff to the city of Littleton's website, you know, to the, the, the reports and stuff. And I wanted to link to this, but we're going to have an, uh, we're going to have a banner session and we're going to have a calendar. And we know we're going to have to update our website, but that is going to be another way to reach a lot of people to talk about this stuff. So as, as the city moves forward with some of the planning, maybe we could have, we could have a link on our website about these future plans. Um, because a lot of people go to it and the, the city website has a ton of information, but it's really hard to maneuver through it. I'm figuring it all out right now and I keep finding the other things, but I'm linking to videos and linking to all kinds of things. So I think once we get our site up and running in a few months, that we may get more interest in preservation because there's going to be access to it. And we're going to be able to, um, put out, uh, blasts when we're having meetings, we're going to have a calendar on there and we can talk about some of these things as well. And we may have to, well, we'll coordinate because the way I'm approaching- Well, we'll coordinate because the way I'm approaching the website, we are advocacy, the city manages the entire program. So there's a difference there. We have to separate that, right? Not easy, but I've been able to kind of do that. So it's a tandem thing that we can do with Historic Littleton. Which is celebrating its 30th year this year, by the way. So it's been around a long time.
Happy birthday to it, right? Um, yeah, you're being very kind with the, the website comments. So. Um, you know, it's definitely on our list of um. You know, how, and especially in light of COVID, how much online communication, just. What it, what a resource it's become for so many cities. So it's definitely on our radar as well.
My only danger is I keep linking to your website and as soon as you change the locations, I, we're gonna have to change our whole website. But um, we're doing advocacy thing to get people excited about preservation and on the resource one. Um, we'll have a thing about myths of preservation, economic benefits of preservation. Linking to the city's stuff, not in great detail because people still have to do their own research, but it's a good. Once we get it up, we can see how it works as a partnership that really promote preservation in the city.
I think it, it's gonna share a very similar path with our housing task force. You know, that, that can serve as that advocacy role and, and, and help facilitate some discussions that are just frankly, hard for the city. To, to be in that front role. Um, it's, it's really helpful to have members of our community advancing that conversation.
We have 60 members of Historic Littleton. I don't know why we can't have 600 members in this community. So.
Well, this is a great discussion.
I know, we'll, we'll just like get there. Can I add one more thing? I just need an acknowledgement. I mean, when we're talking about, you know, um, the housing task force and HLI. I mean, these are all things that we called out very specifically to build these partnerships. As part of our goals in the comprehensive plan. So it is just warming to, to my heart. Sorry. Um, warming to my heart that we, we're doing these partnerships and, and. And making our comprehensive plan come to life. So thank you for your partnerships on all of this.
About the comprehensive plan.
Well, that's great.
And just one last note.
Yes?
Oh, can I, just one last note. It's funny that you're talking about Joe Manicuzzi, like. We were literally in negotiations with his team because we had hoped to bring the speaker series back in 2020. And then COVID happened. Um, so you know, I, it's definitely on our radar. Um, I don't know. I didn't, we're, we haven't started budget negotiations about, because I agree that the benefit is really when he digs in. And does that analysis for your city. Um, but we look forward to kind of keeping that conversation alive and well. Um, virtually is great, but it would be great to have him here on the ground too. So.
There's another person you should look into, Kimber Land, Land, Landy, Landy, Lander. She's from Phoenix. And she personally redid the entire Phoenix Historic Art District. She's not a preservationist. She's a businesswoman and she takes a very different approach, which I think would be. Really good to have business people listen to her talk. And she's spoken at CPI a few times. Kimber Delane, I can send you her email.
All right, there, there are a couple of dates that I want to um, just uh, be sure because you've talked about a lot of, a lot of exciting things. Um, you mentioned the um, the uh, uh, preservation plan was a 2023 date. Is that correct? Did I hear that right?
Yes, that's our hope.
So historic preservation plan 2023.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And um, when do you anticipate rolling the uh, legacy uh, Littleton Legacy Map, the interac, active map out? Did I hear um, Q1 22?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm writing.
One more date. When's our next meeting? It's gonna be a Monday or a Wednesday?
We move back to Monday again after all these holidays. So the next meeting is March 15th, Monday, March 15th.
Okay.
And then um, as far as um, since uh, Littleton, Littleton Legacy List is obviously, that's a year from now. Um, that we're anticipating a rollout. Um, so how shall we close that loop with uh, with Lisa?
Yeah, uh, my, my plan is to call her up and, and let her know. Um, if Kim, if you'd like to join me, we could have a three week call if you'd like.
Yeah, I would, I would like that.
Okay.
And uh, you know, and also the, the comments about the potential award winning program because of the, you know, the. The integration with uh, city departments, other, other folks using this. I think those are, are really important. Um, and uh, Jennifer or Kathleen, if you would like to participate in that as well, because Lisa did a ton of work on this. And um, I'm sure she'll be interested in, in knowing this. So, okay, um. Let's see, uh, anything else from any board members? Is there anything else you would like to bring up at this time?
I would just like to thank the city for sending out the notice of a potential project. On Lowden Street that has come in. And for us not to engage. I'd like that because sometimes we may not know that there's a potential project. And to give us forewarning. Um, is very good. And I forget who, Mike sent it out, but I think we need to do that because that's really the critical quasi judicial issue that we have that we need to be very aware of. And not.
And I was gonna ask about that. Sorry, I was gonna ask about that too, because we've, we've gotten those notices, but in a different format before. So I was curious as to why the change.
So we're trying to improve that, that whole system of notifying the boards and commissions, uh, the various boards and commissions, not just uh. The historical preservation board of when we get an application in. So that if people contact you regarding that particular application, you can say, well, there's an active application. I really can't discuss that. Until it comes to the board in a public hearing format. So um, Andy, to answer your question, we, it's been uh, an iterative process. We're trying to get the most effective. Communications we can. Uh, um, and I know we've tried different things in the past. Uh, do you find the um, the email that was generated this most recent time to be fairly effective? Okay, okay. Uh, you know, we're trying to make continuous improvements. So. Uh, we, we may adjust things in the future, but I'm glad to hear that it uh, it reached you in a timely manner, which is our, our first goal. And uh, also had the, the information you needed, which uh, part of that goal as well.
Yeah, I appreciate that you did that. And I actually presented as a model to other uh, cities and counties in the state.
Thank you.
Well, I really appreciate it because I talked to an awful lot of people and I know people on that street and it. I mean, I, I'm always talking to people, so I, you never know when something's gonna come up. So yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anything else from board members that you'd like to raise? All right then, before we, um, before we, uh, oh yes Andrea.
Yeah, um, speaking of Lowden Street, that reminded me just something to fill a board in on. We got a call. Uh, from Lowden Street that the historic district signs were falling apart that they've had for a number of years now. And so uh, Public Works Department got to work and uh, came up with a, with a new sign, which is now up. The previous signs were done by a specialty shop and um, it cost the city a bit of money, but um, Public Works was able to come up with a new sign that we could do. In-house and I like it quite a bit better. So.
Yay.
Next time you go by, make sure to take a look at the signs. I'm not sure we've heard feedback yet from the residents on the street, but. To me, in my mind, it was a great project.
All right, is there anything else? I, Andy, was that your hand or are you just applauding?
Applauding.
Okay. And I have to apologize. Um, you know, sometimes I, I don't see someone that's trying to make a point. And there's also a little bit of a delay with Zoom. You know, you ask, is, does anyone have something and, and nothing comes up? And it turns out, you know, they did, but you just didn't see it and it came in a little bit later and the delay is kind of maddening. But it's just such, such is our life. Um, but uh, I guess the, the thing that I, I would like to add, um. You know, to Jennifer and Kathleen and Andrea and, and Mike. Um, you know, I, I thank you for, for the, the kind words acknowledging the um, hard work that uh, members of the HPB. Um, have done and are doing and will do in the future on this project that, that we're all. Quite frankly, really excited. Um, that we have the opportunity to work on this and that, that. We are the members of the HPB at this, you know, critical moment in, in Littleton's history. This is a great opportunity. And um, while we're acknowledging hard work, um, look at all of the projects that, that you, you are working on. Um, just with the envision plan and just all of, of, of the projects that that has spun off. You know, by getting a historic uh, preservation plan and new preservation codes and, and, and things along those lines. Um, and it's, it's incredibly exciting. Uh, and it's, it's. It's, it's a great moment in, in the city's history. Um, but it's a lot of work and I know that there's, there's a lot of good work going into it and um. I think all of us, you know, we want to extend our appreciation to you as well. Um, so is, is there anything else before we, we head out for the evening? And gosh, it's nine, 10 as we're journeying and, and we've gone a little long and I know the city likes to keep our Zoom meetings to. Two hours. So you know, please forgive us tonight.
Everybody driving home tonight, be careful.
We'll remember that.
The advantage of Zoom.
That's exactly right. Well.